Good evening. I'm Pat Gales, the chairperson of the Historical Commission, and I'm calling the meeting's order at 03:00. Before we go any further, this meeting is being recorded and will be available on Dyken's YouTube channel. The listing of matters are those recently anticipated by the chair, which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items will also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. Before we continue, Pam Nickerson, our clerk, is absent, and I'll need someone to take minutes for tonight. The secretary's report. Any volunteers for tonight? It's the four of us. Okay, Rafa, thank you. Unfortunately, Pam will be resigning from the commission. I talked with her today. She will submit a letter to the Board of Selectmen, but I would like to thank Pam for her hard work for the commission, and she will be missed. Let's stand for the Federal Legionants. The Federal Legionants to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right. The secretary's report. Pam had sent everyone the minutes, so I'd like a motion to waive the reading of the minutes of June 12, 2022.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Lean on Bill.
Aye.
For the reading, aye. Pat?
Aye.
Rafa?
Aye.
And I am also an aye. I have some changes for the minutes, and I brought copies of the changes that I made because it might be easier to follow along. Under unfinished business on the Town webpage, it's the content to be reviewed by a crossed out Leanne Kerwin, and it's going to be reviewed, Delph, and replace it with Historical Commission. And Delph and Gales will work on review. So that's the change there. Under James Briggs Garden sign, the meetings are with Jenna Montero and Tanya Petricchio, not the garden club. Also, under the James Briggs Garden sign, Pruitt will write a brief paragraph about Briggs' family. Under preservation, planning, FY survey and planning grant status to add draft inventory form, these have been submitted for review. On the second page, the title should be Community-wide Historic Property Survey Update Phase 2, so that we know that it's talking about our next project. So those were the changes that I saw. Did anyone else see any changes? No? All right. So I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes of June 12, 2022 as amended.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I second.
Any further discussion? All right, we'll vote. Bill?
Aye.
Pat?
Aye.
Rafa?
Aye.
And I am also an aye. Next, a motion to waive the reading of the minutes of June 29. Was the market ceremony?
So moved.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All right, let's vote. Bill?
Aye.
Pat?
Aye.
Rafa?
Aye.
And I am an aye, the chair is an aye. Motion to accept the... Any discussion? I said that, okay. Motion to accept the minutes of June 29, 2022.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I second.
Any further discussion? All right, let's vote. Bill?
Aye.
Rafa?
Aye.
And I am an aye. Thank you. Well, since it's the beginning of July and it's time for us to reorganize our Historical Commission, we have nominations for Chair, Vice Chair, Clerk, and CTC Representative. So... For Chair, I had said that at one point that I would, step down if someone else was interested. If there's anyone interested, I will still do that. But other than that, I am willing to continue serving. So I guess we should do... Is there any discussion?
Not really.
Do we want... All right. For Vice Chair, well, maybe we'll just do it all at once. Vice Chair, Rafa, are you still willing?
Sure.
Is there anyone else that's interested? Let's vote on Chair and Vice Chair. For Chairman, Pat Gales, and for Vice Chair, Rafa Delph. I need a motion to... I'll entertain a motion for that.
I make a motion to vote for Pat Gales for Chair and Rafa Delph for Vice Chair for the upcoming year for the Historical Commission.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have to stay.
Right.
Okay, Bill seconded. Any further discussion? All right, let's vote. Bill?
Aye.
Pat?
Aye.
Rafa?
Aye.
And I am also an aye. For Clerk, Pam will not be doing the clerk position, so it is open, and we need someone to be clerk. It's either Bill or Pat.
I've done it before. Don't want to do it again. How's that? I'm being clear.
Rafa, you'll try. All right.
Pro tempore.
Pro tempore.
All right.
Until Ken volunteers.
Oh, that's what that meant.
All right, so...
Until Joanne comes back.
Yeah. A motion to set Rafa temporarily as Clerk.
So moved.
Pat, is there a second? I'll step down and second it.
Second, second.
Okay, thank you, Bill. Any discussion? All right, let's vote. Bill?
Aye.
Pat?
Aye.
Rafa?
Aye.
And I am also an aye. CTC Representative, are you willing to continue, Bill?
Unless they throw me out. I don't think they will.
Well, we have to send you there, correct?
Yes.
Yes. All right, is there a motion for Bill to continue as a CTC Representative?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I second.
Any further discussion? We will vote. Bill?
Can I vote on that?
Oh.
Even though it's... Okay.
You can't make the motion to nominate.
All right, aye.
Pat?
Aye.
Rafa?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Thank you. Okay. Moving along. On the budget, FY 22 budget, I didn't get any information from the accountant's office, so we'll have to just review June's budget expenditures in August. Our FY 23 budget is 1,600, so... Under unfinished business, James Briggs Garden sign. Rafa and I had met with Mike Mallon, the Town Administrator, regarding the survey, the survey grant that went to CTC and the information for that. And while we were there, we talked about signage. He... It's signage for the town hall campus, for this whole campus is under discussion right now for a unifying look on all parts of the area, which will include the gardens. So we can decide what the sign should tell the public, wait to see what they're thinking about for signage, so that that sign will look like the rest of the signs on the town hall campus. One of the factors is cost for the signs. If we're doing one of those infographics for like the family and the house, things start to get quite pricey quite quickly. But we can do the research on it. I think if we write up... Bill, you were going to write something up on the Briggs family for us.
Yeah, I put together a paragraph. I just have to take... Oh, oh, let me ask a question about that. What is the destination of this? In other words, where's... What is this going... My paragraph, what is that going to be used for or whatever?
It's going to be on the infographics, the sign that... Well, what Jenna and Tanya want is like a... It's like a platform that tells about the house that was there and the family that lived there, and why it's named James Briggs, you know, to kind of like tie it into the...
I think.
So it'd be a short paragraph just explaining what the Briggs family was, you know, and then there'd be, you know, something about the house or a picture of the house or whatever. So if we start with more information than we need, we can always narrow it down because I'm not sure of the cost of those kinds of infographics. They have one at the park near Lincoln Avenue. There's one down at Tricentennial Park, near the river. And I keep saying I'm going to stop and see what they look like. But you see them all when you go through different...
Okay, the most... So I, what I, you know, just Googled around and so forth and used some online, you know, ancestry.com, too. And then... So it's... If I just throw all that together in a, you know, prose-like form, it's probably maybe 15 lines. And so a lot of it is from his military career. There's a... So I just popped that out of Ancestry. And but it's interesting, you know. It doesn't... May not appeal to, you know, a general audience, whether or not, you know, what commanding officer he was under and what, you know, missions they went on during the Revolutionary War and so forth. And then I would... I think, like you said, I think I was going to put maybe his parents, but I don't know if we care about his parents in this context.
More about, you know, that he was father of Stoudge Briggs, you know...
His father?
James Briggs was.
Okay, I think his father was either James or Matthew. I care...
James, yeah.
Okay. Matthew was the next step up, was the father.
Probably.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, so...
If you could have that for August or August 19?
Oh, yeah, yeah. In fact, I was working on it today, and I just needed to ask that question. And then I'll put it together, you know, in a few days and just, I'll email it out to everybody.
Very good.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Yes.
I will contact Tanya and...
Jenna.
Jenna. And let them know what's going on, where we're at with that. Okay. Next is to discuss and review the Biocenter Festival. It was good. Not as many people as anticipated. I think, I don't think the crowds were as big as the first year.
No.
You know, we had a lot of people show interest. We still have 200 crayons left, and we still have pennies left. So people were interested in the maps. Some people were interested in the history of Dyken, so I think it's a good event. Does anyone else have any report as to how the day was? First, molasses cookies were delicious.
They were.
If I may, naturally, I'm going to make a comment about, well, about that. I'm not sure I understand. There's just little things, but they could add up to other things. So I was wondering why... Of course, Kevin Smith would probably be the person to ask. I said, didn't he organize? That's anything easy to organize, so... But why are the tents all facing away from...
That's a question for Kevin Smith and his committee because they're the organizers. We just set up where we're told to.
Right.
So that's a question for them. Anything else? I think I was tired at the end of the day. Discuss review the Historical Commission Town webpage. I just started looking at that, and it still lists all of the numbers. But I think your date's wrong. It says 2024, Rafa and Bill, and you should be 2025, I believe, because it's a three-year appointment. So we can check on that. That was the first thing that popped out at me.
I took the oath today.
Huh?
I took the oath today. Did you, Bill?
Yeah, it was all set to, yeah. Excellent. Yeah, I wouldn't let you sit here otherwise. We wouldn't have a quorum. Our quorum was four. So under the first page, you see there's like news, agendas and minutes, historical market program, James Briggs House, demolition delay bylaw, why we can save old buildings, methods about historic preservation, and 15 questions to consider when historic resource is threatened. So I looked at it real quick, and there's some news. Under the news, there's things that are old about the James Briggs House that we may want to consider deleting and adding more updated information. You know, so take a look at it if you get a chance and just, you know, let me know what... Let me and Rafa know what you think.
This is September.
Yeah, yeah. Must be ahead of the game.
Yeah.
All right. Onto the next agenda item, preservation planning. Under our current survey and planning grant, I had the Phase 3 meeting with Peter Stott and Michael Stemmets and Stacy Spies. We reviewed the comments that were made by the Mass Historical Commission and what we had put together and from the Town Historian. So those comments are also being taken under advisement by Stacy for the changes to the appropriate forms. If we want to add more detailed information to any of those houses or any of those forms, we can fill out a continuation sheet to add more details if we feel we want to do that. I meant to send you all the Mass Historical Commission's comments. I will do that tonight so that you also have those. They recommended more specific details on some of the recommendations for the eligibility for the National Register. One of the things that we talked about was the Main Street form, the area form. And there's already a Main Street area form on MACRIS, which covers some Main Street, some Pleasant Street, some Water Street. And then Stacy added some, made a new form called Main Street. And the one that we reviewed that she called Main Street will be called South Dyken. The old form, area form for Main Street will stay on the website because it encompasses a little different areas of Main Street. Then South Dyken will encompass basically Pleasant Street, Main Street, Somerset Ave, where Dr. Seuss's house is, and then down to the Water Street. Because some of... And then those two areas also butt up against our National Register districts, which weren't included because they've been well documented. So Stacy's working on the revisions for these final products. You know, as we talked about last month, we're two to three weeks behind schedule at this point, and final products contractually are due no later than September 30. So that was the gist of that meeting. So it's coming together, which is kind of cool to see. Does anyone have any... Anything to add? Okay. Next is the Community-wide Historic Property Survey Update Phase 2, which is using the CTC funding that we were awarded at Town meeting in June. So I have the request for quotes that I sent for you to take a look at. It's a draft. I'm waiting for Mike, the Town Administrator, Michael Mallon, the Town Administrator, and Mass Historical Commission to review the revisions. And basically, what will change, if anything changes, are the dates. And my questions to the Mass Historical Commission were around how much involvement will they have in the last two, Phase 3 and Phase 4? Because they were heavily involved in commenting on the draft forms that Stacy made. And in Phase 3, will they still be commenting to that degree in our new project? And then in Phase 4, the products, you know, are they getting the same copies? Like they would get a copy of all of the draft forms, which they would have to get in order to input it onto MACRIS, a base map, the final report that she would have to do for us. Right now, it's kind of like we're dreaming for it to be posted like on tomorrow, but that will probably have to back up, to back the whole project up maybe by a week or so. Which is still within, still doable. Does anyone have any questions about the draft?
You said the Massachusetts Commission commented heavily?
In this past one?
Yeah, why?
Just because it's their money and...
But she's done work with them before. They're familiar with her, so I would assume they pretty much like what she does.
So that's, you know, historical facts. They found a builder for one of the Red Gardner for the... Or the Crafts cottages on Center Street, comments like that. And I will send those to you so you...
Oh, okay. So they just gave additional information?
Additional...
Oh, they didn't ask her questions or...
Yeah, some of it...
Oh, gotcha.
They said clarify this point.
Well, that was nice.
Yeah.
They did additional work on their own.
Yeah.
That was nice.
So because it was under, this past one was under the grant.
Mm-hmm.
They did that. So my question to them is, are they going to be that heavily involved?
Right, right.
When we're not under the grant? You know, we're just doing the CTC funding, so... Attached to the request is the street listing, preliminary street listing. So that would be what, whatever consultant, you know, the work would take a look at, and then we would hold it down to the appropriate number of properties. Be done.
Is the procedure for getting quotes on this... I don't know, it's Phase 3? I get confused.
The new, the, yes, Phase...
The first phase of the new phase.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. So Mass Historic Commission was instrumental in the... How does the contract and bid process? How did, how did Mass Historic Commission contribute to that?
They provided the sample language for the request for quotes and for contract.
So is it possible for them to provide, even though they're not providing any finance?
Yeah, and basically, this request for quotes was basically from their sample to put together. It outlines, you know, the scope of work. And then the scope of work becomes part of the contract that you signed with the town.
Do they... How do they get funded? Are they just a state-funded agency? Or do they get funded? They don't get funded by...
I'm not sure their funding. You have to let me search that.
So it doesn't matter to them that they have no financial interest in our second thing? You don't think?
They're interested because it's promoting the history and continuing to document Dyken's history.
It's part of, it's part of their mission.
Right.
Right, okay.
All right, so no questions? All right, so once I get comments from the Mass Historic Commission and from Mike, we will be sending the request for quotes out. Okay. New business, Boston Post King. We have a new recipient, Ms. Dorothy Perry. I need a motion to have the Boston Post King presentation on Monday, August 1, 2022, at 6:00 p.m.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I second. I'm sorry, what is the date?
August 1. It's a Monday.
It's a Monday.
I'm sorry, what is the name of the recipient?
Dorothy Perry. Miss.
Miss.
Yeah, not Mrs.
M-I-S-S.
M-I-S-S.
No kids.
No children, no husband.
And what was the time again on that? August 2? When?
6.
6 o'clock?
Yeah. All right, so I have a motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
You're going to invite the Selectmen, I think, and Mike Mallon?
Yeah, yeah. And the Historic Society and anybody else that would like to join us, so... Yeah, I was coming in. I know, well, I talked to the chairman already.
99.
Contact the president.
100 and January.
Sound available right now.
All right. Let's vote on the motion for the date of August 1 for the Boston Post King recipient.
Aye.
Aye. Rafa?
Aye.
And I am also an aye. Pat, you're working on refreshments.
Yep.
Also, Leanne's going to work on the certificate for the Board of Selectmen. So what, you sent me her... Ms. Perry's nephew's name is Bruce?
Yes.
Not Roger.
Roger was her brother.
Oh, okay, okay. Do we know her parents' names?
Do not. Just the siblings.
All right, so I'll send that along to... This information to Leanne so she can kind of like...
Perfect.
...get it to a certificate for the Board of Selectmen. Okay. It should be another wonderful event. And then we'll...
I hope so.
...get the Boston Post King... We'll have to take that and get it engraved with her name. And I also found the date for Harry Baxter Green.
Good.
Yeah.
Be another date you can update.
Yeah.
That's great.
Do you know what time, August 1?
6:00 p.m.
Here.
Here. With punch.
Of course, yes. All right. It should be a nice event. And I will beg.
Thank you.
Next, the DCR Dyken Railroad Project. They met on June 24 with the representatives from the Horsey-Witten Group. And Ken joined us in particular. And Jeff Corbala was there. And Gerald Alter from DCR. He's the Director of the Trails and Greenways. Jennifer gave a brief summary of the project progress, but the overall meeting was to discuss the local cultural resources and areas of significance along the railroad right-of-way and the neighboring areas that, and we had centered some things. So the group is working with Lisa Caladonia, our conservation agent for the property permitting. Which is good. They said they were a little behind where they thought they would be at this point, but they're making progress. Things are moving along. One of the things they did point out is the railroad bridge behind Gardner's is they had it structurally investigated, and they can, it can be reused. Pictures of underneath on the stones and stuff. There's some cracks, but they seem to think that, you know, structurally it is good to go. However, it will need some work on the top because there's no rails, there's no, there's big gaps between the railroad ties. I mean, I wouldn't want all that, so... Working on that. So it'll... Call it accessibility upgrades. I'd be afraid to walk on it because I'm afraid I would slip through the cracks. I'm being afraid to walk on it because I'm afraid I would slip through the cracks.
Hopefully.
Yeah. Um, there was discussion around the site of the intersection of the trail at Center Street where the, um, old bridge was, you know, the old railroad bridge, and they're gonna be having geotechnical work done in this area. Um, questioning if there's any historical substructure left from the railroad station near this site of the, uh, where the station was. So they'll be investigating that. Um, they had some, a nice picture of the Sabre Gansit Railroad Station.
It's good.
And actually Myrna has the same picture and she sent me a pocket of diamonds here to everyone. I also found it online too. This one right here, and these are the ones that the town historian sent me. So we do have some pictures. Because I I looked at it and like, picture we don't have. The pictures actually came from Hal, the Public Archaeology Laboratory in Rhode Island. It's where Jennifer Relstad got them from, so. But we have those from our town historian. The consultants have had conversations with Ron McGee, who used to open Zoldos feetnotes to the state. Uh, so they have kind of an anecdotal, um.
Saw those.
Uh, information about the area, so like what it was used for before. And they're also reaching out to the tribal leaders because that at one time had quite a bit of, um, archaeology. Spearheads and.
Artifacts.
Artifacts, things like that, yeah. There will be those infographics along the trail.
Spearheads?
Spearheads, I'm trying, I'm just arrowheads, arrowheads.
Better than spearheads.
I was drawing a blank, you know? Obviously was. I mean. Um, yeah, those. You, but you knew what I meant, so that's really not good. Um, there will be infographics along the trails, so that's what we need to get the information for. What we need to do is we identify the sites. We said the Century Stove Company, which was also before it was a Century Stove Company, was the Groveland Foundry Company. Um, that's kind of in back on Somerset Ave and back where seventeen twelve is. The site of the first ferry landing or Sweet Mills Park, Segregance Station. And then, well, we were talking about it because I shared, um, part of the maps of Dayton. When it was Nate from the Horsey-Witten Group asked about the fishing grounds and why it was marked on the map, so the fishing grounds are, and that was an important industry in the early years of Dayton. Doing the same even stuff for Harry and Spelt. Um, so we probably should provide some information for that. Again, this is the kind of, um, research that the more information we get, then you whittle it down to what is actually usable. Uh, because more is better so that you get a complete picture of what, why these sites are important. So I need volunteers to research these areas. Bill, you had already started some work on the railroad. Are you interested in continuing that? No?
Would you repeat the question?
You're not paying attention to me?
Well, I I thought I I thought I was, but go ahead, could you?
You had started, you had done some research on the railroad. Are you interested in doing some more research on the railroad and providing the information to us?
Well, how much information do you need about?
Anything that you think.
Anything about Dayton Railroad?
Yeah.
That's a big subject, though. That is a lot of stuff.
And we have to be able to weed through it to pick out the pertinent parts that we want to tell.
Yeah.
Like around the Segregance Station.
Well, I did send you.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, you want more detail than that?
If you can.
Yeah. Even I have a copy of the schedule, you know.
Yeah, okay.
That includes those stations and things, things like that. Yeah, okay.
All right.
Yep.
So Bill's gonna do that. And, um, I know Myrna, the town historian, probably has quite a bit of information too, so I can ask her to do the same and then we can kind of jive to them and see what.
Yep.
Kat, are you interested in anything?
I'm interested in all of it, but I don't know how successful I would be to get more information than what you already have. So that's why I'm not volunteering for that.
And I, um, I know.
It's not that I'm not interested. I don't have any means of getting information on the Segregance Station or the Sweet Snoll, uh, fishing, the Groveland. I mean, I wrote the things down. Are they interesting points? Yes, they are. But how am I gonna get?
Mm-hmm.
I I don't know where I would go to get more on that.
Myrna.
Then just approach Myrna, you know, she's supposed to, she's got the stuff, she's got the stuff.
Her for these things, you know, but I was thinking if we can do whatever, but fine.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, I will reach out to Myrna around these topics too, because I do know that the Groveland Foundry is in the nineteen twelve Tricentennial Book. And I did find a picture of online of a stove in a New York museum that is tagged made by Groveland Foundry from Dayton, Mass. So I should look for that link again. I could save it. Um. Rafa, is there anything that? You're interested on that list? I'll send you links and you can read it. All right, um. So we'll keep, so let's plan to bring some of this stuff to our August meeting. Let's see where we're at. Next is contact information for the Massachusetts Historical Commission. Uh, Jennifer Dorothy reached out to say, you know, we just need to update our information. So I worried about, would you just check your information, make sure it is correct? And then I will submit it to the Historical Commission. Can we multicast? Um, we didn't have any correspondence. There was nothing in our mailbox. But I don't see any public here yet. I do my phone.
Oh.
I would suggest you send a letter to Rich Banta in Chestnut Street because he has an unbelievable knowledge of railroads in the area.
Okay.
He's worked for railroad all his life. Into railroads. He's had some conversations with those at different times. I'd send him a letter, explain what's happening, ask if he's got any information or pictures.
Yeah.
Or anything that would help you.
Okay.
Because when I think of Dayton, I think, I mean, heard of it, I'm sure it has been, but other than that, I think Rich. Chestnut Street.
Yep. He used to be a member.
Yeah. He used to be a member of the vision. I think he's got a wealth of knowledge. Because that's his inquiry as well.
Okay.
He made the sign on Center Street, you know, the railroad crossing thing.
Yeah, he helped that line in Center Street, crossing the host office.
A Center Street, right.
Main Street.
At Main Street, near, uh, Smith Memorial.
Yeah, right. Main, not Center. You said Center Street.
No, Main Street.
I said Center.
I didn't say that. Um, but anyway, uh, he helped. Search to help with whatever it was. So maybe we can ask him to come back and ring us and the Historical Commission. So, all right, thank you. It's just you. Anything else? Nope, okay. Um. We have one position open on our commission and we have one pending, you know, Pam's letter of resignation. So our next meeting date is August ninth. It's six P M. Is six P M working for everyone? Yep.
Yep.
Good, okay. I'll be good at that. And that's it.
Um, well, can I comment on the open commission position?
Yeah.
Um, so with losing Pam, so we're down to four, which is the quorum.
We have five. John's not here tonight.
We have five?
Yeah.
Let's see, one, two, three, four.
And John Lawrence.
And John is five.
Yeah, a quorum is four.
So. Well, okay, so we did talk that at the last meeting about, um, John's constraint, his business hours.
I'll reach out to him again, yeah.
Yeah, because we don't want him like failing because we didn't get back to him about the six versus seven or whatever.
I I had reached out to him from the last meeting and said six was good, but I will reach out with to him again.
Okay.
Bye. Um. Any a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Um. Non-discussion item, so let's vote Bill.
Aye.
Kat?
Aye.
Rafa?
Aye.
I also, hi.